There are most of all means to work. Great, all in favor?
I'm here.
All good. Please come in for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution. When I mean. Liberty and justice. I am free on tonight's agenda, the school budget hearing.
Okay. So, welcome everyone, tonight's budget hearing. This is the last budget presentation we will be doing before the budget vote next week. We've been doing presentations since January and every presentation is online and we're going to go through some of the other things that are online. So if anybody needs to see more detail than what's included in tonight's presentation, they can find everything on the website. So, the proposed budget for next year is two and a half percent higher than the current year's budget. It's set at forty-five million, nine hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Our proposed levy limit is two and a half percent also, so our levy limit is going to increase by two and a half percent. But our state imposed levy limit was two point seven three percent. The proposed budget's under the tax levy cap for the eleventh straight year. And these are all the data elements that we send up to the state. And you can see in yellow, all of the state imposed levy limits compared to what we've actually levied each year. And we've been under the levy limit every year. This is a summary of each year of the tax cap for the past eleven years. And over time, and over that eleven year time span, we've levied taxes under the levy limit by over one point four million dollars. And we've been able to do this through prudent financial management. We've have not eliminated programs, we've actually enhanced and added programs. We've also, we're also in the best financial condition we've been in. And we also have an excellent credit rating, all while staying under this levy limit. The revenue and the other financing sources, we've gone through several times in past board meetings. Notably, our state aid is increasing by nine point four percent. The largest increase in state aid is really earmarked to support our pre-kindergarten program. So for the first year, we received a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars in state aid to support that program. We've also received some small increases in some other areas. We received a three percent increase in foundation aid. Another revenue source that is increasing significantly is our non-resident tuition. So for the current school year, we have collected much more of our non-resident tuition than we originally budgeted. So next year, we have increased that number. So one million dollars was originally budgeted to collect for this current year. And for next year, we increased that by one point, by five hundred thousand. And we hope to collect at least one point five million dollars next year. You can see that our appropriate fund balance in green has gone down significantly because of this additional revenue that's come into the district. And our tax levy right now, the increase is a little over a million dollars or the two point five percent. The impact taxpayers in Southampton and East Hampton is very similar. So the median homeowner in Southampton should see an increase on their tax bill of a little over eight dollars per month. And the median homeowner in the town of East Hampton should see an increase of slightly over eight dollars and fifty cents per month. And as I said in the past, if these numbers change significantly based on the assessed values when they're adopted by the town sometime in September, we will come back and let you know if there are any drastic changes to these projections. So this is the budget shown in two ways. So on the top of the slide, you can see the budget, the twenty-two, twenty-three proposed budget at the forty-five million, nine ninety-three, three twenty-seven. And then down at the bottom, the same number. But on the top, you'll see the budget breakdown by department. And on the bottom, you will see the budget breakdown by the type of expense. So it is a little easier to see the increases and decreases on the bottom half of the slide. And you'll see that the highest increases right now are attributable to personal services and also employee benefits. Mostly every other area in the budget has decreased. We're also required by New York State to show taxpayers the budget in three parts. And these, this three-part budget is also available online in detail in the budget statement. And we have the administrative component, which includes all of the administrative costs. It includes security, it includes data processing expenses, it includes the district meeting costs. The program component is mostly all instruction, general education and special education. And the capital component includes costs such as transfers to other funds and debt service. And from our three-part budget, we have to compute our contingent budget. So if the budget fails, we have to know exactly what budget we will present to the voters either the second time in June or if the board decides to not have a second vote, what budget they will adopt on July first if the proposed budget fails or is defeated. So if the proposed budget is defeated, the board may decide to do one of the following. They could resubmit the defeated budget or revise budget on the statewide budget re-vote date on June twenty-first. Or they can just immediately adopt the contingent budget, it could be enacted July first. Now, the contingent budget includes reductions, state mandated reductions in equipment and other administrative costs. These reductions right now total four hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And in addition, some reductions will have to be made in student programs and services. And facility usage by the public will also be limited in accordance with the law. If the resubmitted or revised budget is defeated on June twenty-first, then the board must adopt the contingent budget. And when a district adopts a contingent budget, the tax levy cannot be increased for any reason. And the tax levy limit is set at zero percent. So there is no exclusions allowed under a contingent budget. So as a result, the amount of the appropriated fund balance used to support the proposed budget will increase by five hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars to make up the difference in tax levy that we will not be able to collect if a contingent budget is adopted. So what would happen is we would lose one million, eight thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars in tax levy. So we would have to make the cuts of four hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and ten dollars to the budget. And then we would also have to increase our fund balance by five hundred and fourteen thousand. So you'll see here, nothing on this revenue and financing source for our contingent budget has changed up in the top. Our state aid would remain the same, all of our other revenue projections would remain the same. But if you look at general fund tax levy here, there would have to be no increase at all. And that would, that would be the same tax levy as our current year. So we would have to go ahead and increase our appropriated fund balance. So the current year, we appropriated nine hundred eighty-one thousand, forty-five dollars of fund balance. And for next year, if we fall under a contingent budget, we would have to appropriate nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars to close that budget gap. Which means our budget-to-budget increase would not be two and a half percent anymore, it would actually be one point four percent. We would have a one point four percent budget-to-budget increase with a zero percent tax levy increase. So the three-part budget in detail is actually included in the budget statement. So when you go to the website, you'll see this posted up there just a couple of days ago. Also in the budget statement, the property tax report card is included. You'll see school academic report cards and the financial transparency report. The administrative compensation disclosure notice is also included in the budget statement. And the exemption report for both tax and jurisdictions, Southampton and East Hampton are also included. Then the budget notice will be placed online tomorrow morning, but it's also being mailed out to all the voters. So all the taxpayers will receive a copy of the budget notice. And the budget notice also breaks down these numbers. You'll see all of the current year's budget numbers here, all of the proposed budget numbers here. And then the contingency budget is in the last column. And then in the middle, it does provide you some information about that contingency budget. And then on the bottom of the budget notice, you'll see this is what the average star savings would be for all of our taxpayers. Online is also the budget newsletter, which also provides some additional information. And just to refresh everyone's memory that we do have a proposition two on, on for the vote on Tuesday. So proposition two is basically asking the taxpayers to allow us to use two point five million dollars in capital reserve funds to have a district-wide HVAC unit ventilator upgrade project, which would include replacing all of our unit ventilators in the elementary school and replacing or installing new unit ventilators in Pearson. That work would get done over the summer of twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And this, if this proposition does pass, it will have no impact on the budget or the tax levy. So these funds are already available in our, in our reserve or in the bank. So this is just some of the historical budget vote results. And in the past, we have had mixed voter turnout. Last year, our voter turnout was very low, it might have been due to COVID also. So we hope to have our voters come out this year and support the budget. And over time, you can see in yellow, this is when the property tax has been in effect, all the highlighted area in yellow. And on average, if you take out this tax levy increase for twenty, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we've stayed in the range of two point six nine percent is an average tax levy increase. And our tax levy limit has been a little over three percent, the average. So we hope that all the voters can come out on May seventeenth and exercise their right to vote. And the vote will be in the high school gym between the hours of seven to nine p.m. And if they have any questions, as I said, they can go online, download any information they'd like to know. And then they could also email me or call me with any questions also.
Great, thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Board questions for this portion.
I just want to once again say proposition two, because it says two point five million could make people nervous. It is not any tax increase to the voter, correct?
Yes, there's no tax increase at all to voters.
This is just a fund that has been created that is going to allow us to spend it on better heating and ventilation in all of our buildings, which is what we all want for our children. So zero cost to the taxpayer and it'll have better ventilation, so.
And there's also a grant program that we're going to take.
Yeah, we have a little less than seven hundred thousand dollars worth of grant funds that'll be added to the project. So we'll be able to complete the project and really overhaul all of the HVAC systems in both buildings.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer, again, on that outstanding, clear-cut, beautiful budgets.
We move to public input number two, number one. I mean, four point one on tonight's agenda. The Board of Education encourages public participation on school-related matters at the board meetings. Public input is reserved for comments related to the agenda and non-agenda items and does not require signup. The period for public input is unrestricted to accommodate as many comments as possible. The board does have the discretion to limit public input if a meeting is going particularly long. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. Comments should be as brief as possible. No speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than three minutes during public input one. A member of the public wants to address the board more than once, they will wait until all others have had the opportunity to do so. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Obscene language, libel statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious or other points of prejudice will not be tolerated. The board will not permit in public session discussions regarding or concerning individual district personnel or students. Persons wishing to discuss these matters should present their comments and/or questions to the appropriate administrator during the regular business hours. A member of the community fails to conduct themselves appropriately or violates the rules set forth herein, the board has the right to suspend the community member's privilege at speaking during public input. Persons making comments at board meetings will address remarks to the president. May direct questions or comments to board members or other district officials only upon the approval of the president. Board members and the superintendent shall have the privilege of asking and answering questions with any person who addresses the board. President shall be responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and shall rule on such matters as the time allowed for public input discussions and the appropriateness of the subject matter being presented. President shall have the right to discontinue any public input which violates this policy. With that, is there anybody on Zoom or here in person that wishes to participate in public input number one? Mr. Fisher indicates someone on Zoom, please allow that person in. Hi, Michelle, please just give us your name only, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Michelle Leo, three minutes, oh, I feel like that got longer. I am here, good evening, everybody. Thank you for that beautiful budget presentation, that was great, and can't wait to vote yes, as always. I am here tonight as a COVID mom, living my best life for the second time in three weeks. So here's my question relevant to that, we obviously are having an uptick in cases, isn't this a good time? And, but what's the process for how everybody gets notified in that? I have had two children, so it's the Fri-, it's the weekend thing. There, it feels like there is a seventy-two hour delay. If someone's testing positive on Friday, we're having a big delay before we get notified that your last exposure was Friday. And there's a lot of activities that are happening on those weekends. I know, for example, when my daughter's exposure, I got notified Monday. We spent a whirlwind of a weekend going to birthday parties, doing the egg hunt, because life is returning to some semblance of quote-unquote "normal", whatever that version is in twenty twenty-two. And so I'm concerned that this delay in notification is also actually increasing spread on some level. And I'm wondering if there can be a modification as to how quickly this information is disseminated. Also, how are parent, what is the technical way we tell people that we have COVID? And then, my last thing is, I need a Chromebook, guys, it's been broken for weeks, we don't have one. And there's been no communication with me as a parent who has a child who's out on what the expectations, the rules are. Are we just like, cool, we're absent, no big deal, see you when we see you? Or like, what's the sort of system in place, if any, this is the first time I'm doing this, so I'm new to the show, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your questions. We will try to address them all, let's see.
Well, I have one, I have question one and three. I forgot what two was, but you can remind me, Michelle.
I don't know what two was, I, Mr. Nichols, I'm dying. And not of COVID, I keep testing negative.
So notification, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Malone and Ms. Carriero in a moment. But from my end, what happens daily around noon, I get notified regarding positive test results on that given day. And then a district-wide notice goes out, those are the emails you get that provides an overview of cases within the district. And then at the building level, there's a different level of communication. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Malone to start, and then Ms. Carriero can talk about the middle school, high school.
Sure, so at the elementary level, when a case is reported, typically reported to the school nurse, that information then makes its way to my office and I send an email out or a parent square message out to the families that are affected where that individual, whichever class that individual was in. To Michelle's point, there is sometimes a lag over the weekends, we may not receive that information till Monday morning and then try to get that out as quickly as possible, once, once things can get clarified. You know, we want to have accurate details before we send that out to the parents. But I can say that thanks to our school nurses and the great communication that they have with families, I know just this Friday, there was a message delivered to the nurses after the school day ended and we were able to get a notification out to, to the families of that class. So there can be a lag sometimes on the weekends, but we do our best to get the information out to the parents whenever possible.
And then Ms. Carriero is similar at the middle school, high school?
So I believe our, it's similar at the middle high school, but it's a little bit more complicated. So the sixth grade reaches out to those pods, because the kids are cohorting. So it's a little bit easier to contact trace, while the high school, we have to go by every course or if it's a staff member, every course they teach in order to contact trace. So it's a little bit more labor-intensive. We realize that handing out COVID tests to middle high school students, they want to take the test right away within the school building. So we are asking that families pick them up in the main office for grade seven through twelve. And grade six will have them sent home to them. We shifted our way of delivering the COVID tests. And the same thing with Mr. Malone, our nurses have gone above and beyond. And when we find out, we try to disseminate the information as soon as possible. But sometimes, because it's Sag Harbor, it's word of mouth, so we have to reach out to those families directly to talk to them.
And then question number three, Michelle, which pertained to the Chromebook, I'll let Mr. Malone address that with you individually. But I'm sure that that's something that you deal with.
Yeah, you know, I can follow up with that particular instance in the morning. But if parents ever run into an issue, I always ask that they first reach out to the classroom teacher, and if that's not.
She's out too, Mr. Malone, the poor thing.
I am aware of that. If the teacher's not available, reach out, reach out to me. With the, with the younger students, the, always the hope is to keep continuity of instruction. But sometimes with the younger kids and the, you know, use of Chromebook, use of the computer tools, it's, it's not as easy as, as it may be with the older students. But we want to do our best and get them back to school as quickly as possible.
For sure, I'm happy to everybody.
Michelle, was there, did you recall what the second question was, because I don't remember?
No, I think it was something about timeliness of disseminating the information, but, but all of the, the administration is answering beautifully, I'm not, I thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I hope your family feels better.
Yep, we're hanging in, no problem.
Bye, Michelle.
Mr. Fisher, anybody else?
No.
Any questions in the chat box, I just can't see that from here?
No.
Anybody here that wants to partake in public input number one? We will move on to section five of tonight's agenda, the, I'm sorry, section six of tonight's agenda, which is the superintendent's report.
Great, I have a couple of things to touch on, added a few items, but I'll start with what's listed, which is the park update, Mash Ashen knew it. We did, I say we, the negotiating team for the school met with the park board and the architects for the school district last Wednesday. And the purpose of that meeting was to provide an opportunity for the architects to ask detailed questions about the approved schematic layout so that they can produce construction documents to submit to the DEC. My understanding is that construction documents have to be roughly sixty percent complete in order for the next submission phase to the DEC. And in order to get to sixty percent, the architects needed to ask the school district and the park questions about fencing, dugouts, field dimension size.
Electrical.
Electrical, bathroom locations, water stations, things of that nature. So the meeting lasted a little bit over an hour, and at the conclusion of the meeting, the, the architects from H two M stated that they had the sufficient amount of information to proceed with producing the construction documents to submit to the DEC for the next phase. That's a summary of the park meeting, any questions about that? Board members? The second thing I want to talk about is just a quick update with regard to the business office. You recall that, you may recall that prior to Ms. Bouchami coming to Sag Harbor for a second time, we had a assistant school business administrator. That person left the district in August of last year. And Ms. Bouchami and I decided to try to fill that position with an accountant versus a assistant school business administrator, thinking that she might be able to do that. After an exhaustive search that's lasted upwards of nine months and canvassing multiple lists and in consideration of some of the changes in the district the last year, including the HVAC projects, which have two phases, the masonry project, the upcoming park referendum. After speaking with Jennifer, we've decided to revert back to the assistant school business administrator position. So our plan at this point is to replace the person who was formerly there with a new candidate. And we plan on posting that position later this week with your approval.
Great. So let me just understand this for the public. So we had an assistant business official, the money is in the budget, the money is still in the budget. It was not used or transferred anywhere else.
We hadn't used the money, she actually resigned, actually it was posted in June. So none of that money, the current year was ever used.
Right.
And we do have a position in the next year's budget.
Right, but there's no, so it's already in there, it hasn't changed from the last year and a half. So it's basically just a rollover of a position.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you for summarizing.
No problem.
Any board questions or comments on that?
Good luck.
Good luck. Let's know how the posting goes.
Sure, I also wanted to talk a little bit about COVID and provide an update to the district. I'm sure that, as I said to Michelle during the public input section, these notices go home pretty regularly to the community. And for those of you who read them, you'll notice that there's been an uptick in the number of COVID cases over the last month. And actually, the last board meeting I provided an update was on COVID was April ninth. And I'll just provide a quick statistical overview to give you some, a sense of the nature of the change. So back on April ninth, test positive was six percent. May ninth, which is really May eighth data, it was nine point three percent. Seven-day average was three and a half percent back on April ninth, it's nine percent now, so almost triple. There were thirty point nine cases per one hundred thousand residents in Southern County. As of yesterday, it was thirty-six point one cases. And the seven-day average per one hundred thousand residents, the sixteen point three back on April ninth, it's forty-seven point eight as of yesterday. It's almost triple. So you, there's been a lot of stories in the paper about what's changed. And, you know, certainly that there seem to be more people who are catching the virus. And the other thing that's changed, and there have been multiple articles about this, is that the percentage of people who have some type of immunity to COVID is greater than it was at any other time during the pandemic. And that's primarily due to two issues. Number one, a larger number of people are vaccinated and a larger number of people have had an infection. And when you combine those two things together, it's not hurting immunity, but there's a greater amount of immunity. And so what you're seeing is, you're seeing a rise in the number of cases, but you're not seeing a proportionate rise in hospitalization and severe illness that's proportionate, like we saw in earlier phases of the pandemic, for instance, with the Delta variant. So it's different. And how our country and the world is reacting to this and our community is probably different as well. One of the things to think about as we send these notices out is, should the school be adopting the mitigation measures that we have in place? And really, we have to take our guidance, we don't have to, but I think it's prudent to take the guidance from the people who know the most about this, which is the Center for Disease Control, the New York State Department of Health, and the Southern County Department of Health. And I prioritize the Center for Disease Control. And what they came out with several months ago, back in February, is a community risk level. And they classify communities, and it's really coun- And they classify communities, and it's really counties, low, medium, or high risk. And Suffolk County up until last week was low risk, meaning that the risk was low and there were really not a lot of strong recommendations from the CDC about mitigation measures. We recently moved to medium-level risk. And we're one of, let me check my notes. We're one of twenty-one other counties in New York State that have moved to that level. So we're not alone. Nassau County's in the same boat. In fact, Nassau County was there a week earlier than us. The medium level really doesn't carry any significant changes in mitigation recommendations either. You don't get a significant change in mitigation recommendations until you get to high level. And the significant change, as it relates to the public, is masking in public spaces or indoor spaces if you get to the high-risk level. Bear in mind, it's a recommendation, not a mandate from the CDC. So at this point, it's somewhat premature to talk about that because we're at medium level. If we do get to the high level, as a board of education and as a community, we'll have to sit down and discuss what to do with the CDC's recommendations and whether we think it's prudent at that time to revisit some mitigation measures that we've relaxed over the last couple of months. So that's pretty much where we're at with COVID. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Were there questions for Mr. Nichols? We'll keep monitoring that. And if it changes necessary, we'll have another meeting to address policies or what your recommendation would be if necessary.
Correct.
Good evening, everyone. So this time of year, I'm just providing a quick update on some of our end-of-year activities. Last week, we held a successful pre-K orientation. We welcomed a little over twenty families of students who will be joining our pre-K program next September. And that was a very successful event. They had a chance to not only see the building, but meet the faculty and, most importantly, learn about our wonderful pre-K program. This week, tomorrow night, Wednesday and Thursday, we are hosting open houses. Various grade levels are welcoming families into their classrooms. A great opportunity to highlight work from throughout the school year in the classrooms. And then families will also have a chance to walk around the building and see all the other key parts of the elementary program. As May progresses, our instrumental groups, fourth and fifth graders, they'll be sharing their talents with parents. We're doing some small performances after school. And then finally, as we near the end of May, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, that will be the annual fifth-grade wax museum presentation. As we did last year, we are going to actually host that event outside on our track. So whether permitting, it'll be the twenty-fifth or not, we have a couple reasons for that.
Any questions for? Sounds a lot taller. Thank you.
Right, good evening, everybody. Last week, just like there was orientation for pre-K at the elementary school here at the middle high school, we had a big high school orientation for our incoming ninth graders, our current eighth-grade students and families, led by Ms. Jimon Joan and Ms. Mato. I'm going to go over some of those quick events. Right now, we are in the throes of IV and AP testing. They go to May twentieth, so our kids are hard at work, especially our senior international bachelorette students. May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is a sixth-grade trip to Erie Point Springs. It's one night, led by Mr. Rainey. And the sixth graders are very excited about that. And we're finally excited to go back into overnight trips. May twenty-sixth is our junior-senior prom. Pre-prom will be at four forty-five this year. It's a little bit earlier because it is Memorial Day weekend and prom is at Montop Downs. And we are shipping the kids off on buses. And we know that there will be summer traffic as people work remotely now. And then, as Mr. Malone said, it is concert season here. So May seventeenth is the orchestra concert, the same night as the budget vote. So once you vote, please come see our students at our orchestra concert. May twenty-fifth is the band concert, and June second is our chorus concert.
Any questions for Ms. Carrero? Great, thank you very much. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion for consent agenda items eight point two through eight point one five? Is there a second? Good. Any discussion?
I just want to thank Michelle Leo for the information.
Yes.
And wish. A wonderful retirement.
Congratulations, best of luck.
And somebody had questioned why there was a temporary suspension of budget transfers, but it's because Jennifer's trying to close up the books, and that's happens, it happens. At the same time, everything, so just want to put that.
Any other comments from board members? Mary, can you please open up the voting?
Do we have a motion in second?
There was, Burdana made the motion right inside.
Computer froze for a moment.
Oh, my God, that's Mary fired.
No, the computer's. I opened up the voting. That's unanimous.
Nothing in tonight's agenda for items for discussion? Anyone have anything? Public input number two, same rules apply to public input number two. If there's anybody online, raise your hand, put your question in the chat room. If you're here, just raise your hand, then we will recognize you. Is there anybody here or virtually for public input number two? Mr. Fisher?
Nobody online.
Anybody here in person? Okay, we will move on, okay? Section eleven of tonight's agenda is a proposed executive session to discuss contracts. I'll put a motion out there shortly. If it carries, the board will go into executive session to discuss contracts. At the conclusion of which, the board will come out with sole purpose of closing the public hearing. No other action will be taken against the board. All intents purposes, this would be the end of the public meeting. With that, is there a motion to convene to executive session to discuss contracts? Any discussion? Great, Mary, please open up the voting.
Can't get something? But I. That's unanimous.
Great, so the board will go into executive session. Everybody else, have a good evening. Thanks for coming.